All right, good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the December 16, 2019 Board of Education Work Session. Donna, can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Attia?
Here.
Mr. Koch?
Here.
Dr. Green?
Here.
Ms. Hodges?
Here.
Ms. Prusman?
Here.
Ms. Pasley?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
I now need a motion to approve the agenda for the work session.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Any changes or discussion? Hearing none. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Attia?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes. Motion carries 7-0. Moving on to Agenda Item 3, Facilities Planning Discussion. 3A, Questions to Answer. A1, Transportation. Dr. Van Zyl?
Very good. Good afternoon to you and to everybody else who joined us. So, thank you. From our last board meeting, one of the things that you had asked for us to do for this work session was try to provide answers to the questions DLR had left and then a few that you had sent our way. So, myself and several others will be doing our best to answer those questions for you today. We're going to try to do that fairly quickly and then give you time to discuss, ask questions that you need to as the work session progresses so as we move on. So, as I go through this process, I kind of, you'll see each one is listed there. The first one was a question in regard to transportation. Dr. Seigres, Dr. Edgar, and myself, we've had conversations with Apple, taking a look at different things involving that. Of course, we have a board policy that you have in place and guidelines from the state on how long a route can be. So, the concern or question about longer routes, those types of things, no, they still have to fall within the timeframe that you put in place. Now, the issue that you have is if you change from your three existing schools or you change boundaries on those existing schools, the state basically has a one-mile radius around the school and that's what you as a district enforce. So, wherever you were to buy property, let's say you built a new school or two new schools, wherever those schools would be, you draw a one-mile radius around that and then those are the students that are not bused. Anybody inside of that radius are not bused. Anybody outside of that can be bused. There is an exception in Robert or Gabe, if they want to chime in, they can't, for safety zones. So, if there are train tracks that you have to cross or no sidewalks, then our folks along with the Transportation Department take a look at those and then those students can be bused. By our estimation, then conversations with Apple, I don't know that our number of students would vastly change because, remember, we're busing to three schools now. This year, you went to two hubs. You have the North Hub and the South Hub for transportation. So, that's already made us a little more efficient. The only thing that I would say that would be impactful, and it's impactful to us now, is almost none of our schools that we currently have have good pickup, drop-off for anything. They're very landlocked. So, if you do something to renovate, to build new, that would have to be part of the planning process with the architect, be able to say, what's a good in and out, number of buses, number of students, all that thing. And that's part of the planning process that would have to be involved. Questions about transportation? Okay?
Thank you, Dr. Van Zyl. Moving on to 3A2, Location Possibilities.
Location Possibilities was another thing that you asked us to investigate and so we've been working with a civil engineer to take a look at some possible locations. Of course, we can't necessarily tell you what those locations are because until you as a board decide what you want to do, negotiations on land, property, all those things would be in a closed session anyhow. But what we've been able to do is kind of identify several properties and the person took a look at it and gave us an estimate. And what their estimate is, is based off of multiple things. The purchase of the property, so they took a look at what sale price of land is. Utilities, electrical, water, sewer, those are all included in that price. And then dirt moving. And a shovel full of dirt is like gold because it is quite costly to move dirt. And from the properties, they basically gave us a range. The cheapest property that they looked at would be roughly $4 million all-in utilities, purchase, everything that you needed to do there except for the construction of the site, of course, the dirt work, to $10 million. And so, you also know that there are a limited number of properties in the community that would also be large enough to house a school. When you're talking about high schools and our folks from DLR are here, they can throw something at me if I say it wrong. Normally, it's about 80 to 100 acres is what you're taking a look at when you're taking a look at a site for a high school. It goes down a little bit for every school. If it's a middle school, it's less property. If it's an elementary school, it's less property. So, you have a range off those location possibilities of about $4 million to $10 million buying, getting it ready to build.
How many did they, Robert, how many did they supply?
Uh, Dr. Edgar, do you remember, wasn't it five?
Four. Four properties.
Four properties, four either-or, either building one big school or building two smaller schools.
Correct. Yeah, all the acreage would be fine for two schools.
Be sufficient.
Uh-huh. Any other questions on locations? Moving on to 3A3, Boundaries and Redistricting.
From our last meeting, you asked us to reengage with Preston Wood, who did your demographic study. And so, we have reengaged with him in regard to boundaries and we made it clear to take a look at all the boundaries, just not related to high school but middle school, elementary as well. So, he is in the process of taking a look at that for us. What we tried to do is also tell him that there are some priorities, in our opinion as a district, that you have to take a look at. You have to take a look at socioeconomics. You have to take a look at diversity. You have to take a look at neighborhoods and can you keep neighborhoods together. And then you also have to take a look at, in no particular order am I saying these, capacity of buildings and can those buildings hold more or less students than they have now. So, part of this process that he'll go through, when he gets everything put together, we'll then be able to use different scenarios to be able to show you, based off of those items, how those schools could be laid out, whether that's taking our existing schools and making adjustments or if they were to, if you were add or to build or do something else, they could put those scenarios together for you as well. So, he's taking a look at all of those concepts as well, which you know is a little bit of a challenge and that's why you need an outside expert to be able to take a look at how they can do that. Right now, they're pinpointing every address of students and potential address because we have preschoolers as well, to be able to project how that would look.
What did we expect that?
He told us if we could get him some information by the end of this week, I think it'll be after the new year, probably the second week of January, I think that he may be ready to go unless we can't get something to him that he needs.
Is he going to come and make a presentation?
I'm sorry.
Will he come and make a presentation?
That's what we'll probably have to discuss at some point because it'll probably start out, in my opinion, maybe with one of the committees and let the committees have a conversation and then see if it makes sense what they're doing and then probably come and make a presentation to the whole board. Because I think it'd be easier through that process than have all of you bombard him with a bunch of questions. At first, we'll probably get a representation from the board, see what he does, see if it makes sense to you, if something's missing, let him tweak or adjust it and then come make that to you.
Larry?
We've heard frequently that we have too many buildings for the number of students that we have. So, I'm assuming one of the outcomes of this will be an opportunity to, how best to allocate our student population and based on the number of buildings we've got, look for opportunities to be more efficient and possibly closing some schools to save money.
That's my understanding. That's what you directed us to ask him to take a look at, not just high school-related, elementary, elementary, middle school, high school.
Everything, yeah.
Correct. And that's about the way the current structures are. You know, when he closed a couple of schools and brought some more students into a couple of others, that created some issues for us and so all that would be taken a look at.
We have a document. When are we going to use the document that shows kind of the school comparison to other school districts, the number of buildings that they have?
Later. It was probably going to be a little later, but if it's something you want to pull up now.
No, we'll just wait till then, but I think that'll help answer some of those questions, Larry.
Okay.
Any other questions on the boundaries or redistricting? Moving on to 3A4, Extracurricular Opportunities.
There's a document that we asked our high school folks to put together and it's, and you actually have two documents. You have, the first one is the whole district by high school activity, by sport. And so, our ADs put together this list for us and so that you can see each high school is listed and then it's broken down by fall, winter, and spring sports. And so, from there, if it has a check mark, it has it. And so, it may be a little bit hard to see across the top, but each activity is listed. Like, you'll have varsity football, JV football, freshman football. So, if those, if it doesn't have a check mark next to it, some high school does not have that particular sport. Like, if you take a look at the third one over, you have Benton and Lafayette do not have below JV football. Central does. Central has. You can see the check mark there in that box. The two boxes aren't checked on that third one over. Does everybody see that? That's kind of how you go through this. So, when you go through that whole process, when you come down to the bottom, you can see not every school has enough students to be able to carry the number of offerings and so you get to a total at the bottom where Benton has 37 offerings of athletics, Central has 49, and Lafayette has 31. So, that was something that you asked us to put together for you. Now, you can see there are a couple things I want to say. There's like a wrestling JV. There's not a girls' wrestling JV at Central, but most, everything else, it's just size. It's economy of size. You know that you have more kids, you're probably going to get enough kids to come out for an activity. If you don't have enough kids, it's harder to do that. The other, the only other thing that this doesn't show is what else could you do and that's a little bit part of what, you know, academically Marle will be talking about. But from this perspective, other clubs, other things could be engaged or could be done. You just have to have enough kids to be able to offer it. The other one was fine arts. Can you pull that one up? And it's very similar to this one. We asked for our folks who oversee fine arts to put this together and this one, just vertical instead of horizontal. They listed all of the courses or opportunities along the sign that are, side that are kind of fine arts related. And you can see as you go through that process that there are some things that some schools have that other schools don't. And that's, again, just based off the amount of interest that kids have in those particular classes and the number of students that you have. The one thing that isn't there, and I'll try to get for you, is the number of kids involved in each one of those because you could have it, but is it really good to have a jazz band if you only have 15 kids as compared to 60? I'm not a jazz person, but you know, there are some comparisons. You may have it, but your numbers are not normally necessarily equal in all of those. So, it's not like you have 50 kids at each one of those, but it's enough to make those classes moving forward. Did we have a total on that one?
Are any or all of those Misha programs, some of those I recognize are, but are all of them?
Fine arts or athletics, which one?
The fine arts.
Well, you have several that you're going to go, like your debate, there's debate competitions.
That's a Misha, isn't it?
Correct. Marley, is that 100% Misha? Is debate, are all of these all Misha-sponsored? Some of them we choose to do just because it's an activity that our kids want to, I'm sorry.
Debate Choir and Band.
Debate Choir and Band are your three Misha-sponsored?
As well as Debate.
Very good.
So, Don Theater.
So, are there other Misha activities that we do not participate in? I know it's quite a list of Misha activities.
I'm sure there are. I don't have a mission list.
That would be something that, I just put together what we currently have in a comparison. That's part of the conversation of what else could you add if you don't have enough in a certain area, whether it's athletics or fine arts. Are there other things that we could be bringing onboard that benefit our students?
So, I'm interested to see the number of students that take place.
We should try to get that.
That take advantage of these different programs because I think when people have concerns about the extracurricular activities, they're thinking that fewer kids are going to qualify for each one of the teams because, you know, you're shrinking to a certain number, especially if it goes to just one school.
Sure.
How many can participate? And so, I think that's the concern, not that we'll be able to offer the same ones, but that we'll have less being able to participate in those. And having some of the Misha activities that we don't currently participate in as possibly being available because there's enough people is of interest as well.
Well, and that'll be part of the conversation you as a board will need to have as well because if either one of these, if you're not investing dollars in it or you don't have enough to make it, you could invest those dollars someplace else. But I'll work on getting you numbers. Robert's sitting there and so I'll kind of look at Robert to help get those numbers together for me.
I'll let ADs pick them up.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, and Cappy, I think you make a good point because I think the focus right now from the community feedback I've received is about closing schools and I don't think that's the intent of anybody, the administration or at the board level. I don't think anyone's going to close our high schools and not repurpose them for some other use, for example, for a middle school. And so, what additional opportunities, if we did have those high schools repurposed as middle schools, would that provide also for our middle school students? Could we provide expanded, like we're going to talk about at the board meeting today, expanded basketball, expanded volleyball, expanded football, expanded drama, debate band, all of that at the middle school levels? Those are the types of things that I think we have to lay out for the public as we move forward, not just the high school level, which I understand has taken the focus right now, but also at the middle school level in Phase 2 and then at the elementary school in Phase 3, what will that look, what will that look like?
Yeah, I think that they need to understand what is it going to look like in the future, maybe not every little detail, but with some organized fashion or they, you know, we're just not going to get those.
And I think, absolutely. One of the other questions that I've heard is, you know, this will impact the amount of students getting scholarships. You had less than 30 students getting athletic scholarships that we were notified of as a district last year out of all three of your high schools. So, that doesn't mean that there's going to be.
Do you mean athletic scholarships?
Athletic scholarships.
Okay. So, then it's also going to be of interest, how many of those are from the smaller school versus our largest school, you know, that.
Sure. Well, the issue that you run into, high school athletics has really changed a lot over the years. You don't get very many students that truly are just recruited from your high school programs. Most of them are AAU or competitive leagues that they go out for because if, that's just how it's evolved, it's a big moneymaker for somebody out there to have a competitive activity. But also, having had a daughter or two that have been collegiately recruited, coaches don't want to go to just watch one kid at one location. They want to go someplace where they can see 10, 15, 20 kids that maybe have the potential to get on their roster. So, that's how I think it's evolved over the years. A little bit, a little bit is different with the fine art side of things. There are some things, students that are, this is where a lot of the students are going to get recruited if there are going to be some fine arts, you know, marching band to go to college, you know, those types of things from the activities that they see. But those also, you have competitions for those for people to go and watch as well. But we can, we'll get those numbers for you.
Anything else on extracurricular opportunities? Got Dr. Green?
If we can go back to the last slide, or last, yeah, I think, I don't know if you can hear me. The take-home point I see and have from this is our largest high school, Central, is just able to offer more sports, more activities than kids that are attending Lafayette and Benton have the opportunity for. That's what I see here. And so, in other words, a larger school in this situation offers more opportunities for the students at that school. That's, I think, that's the main take-home point I get from this.
And I want to disagree with you because you have a larger pool of kids to draw for different interests, for them to be able to be engaged in. You know, if you have a smaller number and you offered the same, well, we do offer the same opportunities, you can't be involved in two fall activities at the same time. You know, you can rotate fall, winter, spring, which a lot of our kids do.
Any other questions on extracurriculars? Moving on to 3A5, Potential Use for Existing Facilities.
This was a question that came from Board and we've talked a little bit about it before in regard to if you vacate a facility, what would be the possibilities for the facilities that are there? I'll use high schools as the example since that's kind of what you're talking about tonight. If you vacate a high school, and DLR can chime in if they want to for me, people ask, well, if you have a high school and you leave it, why would you go back and use it as a middle school? My understanding, my experience, the people that are experts in that field will tell you that it's cheaper to renovate to something that's a lower grade level because you're not putting like a high school class, high school, you're putting in more labs, more experiment stations, more different types of learning that need different types of things as compared to a middle school. So, it's normally cheaper to renovate those. The other thing that you also have is we have quite a few facilities that are not in good shape, from our warehouse to our maintenance facility department. So, could some of those facilities that maybe we would not be using, could they be utilized in some other way? I'll go out and on a limb and say this as well, whether you agree or not, that'll be up to you. We have some issues on the south end. You know, when we closed an elementary school a couple of years ago, you have an elementary school that had to have some portables brought in at Hosea. You have Spring Garden that was developed to be an elementary school but is being used for a middle school. You have Benton High School that's sitting there now that if, for some reason, it wasn't going to be a high school, does make some sense to maybe make that into a middle school because we need to make some adjustments on that end of the community. And those things just seem to make sense. Now, can I guarantee that that's going to happen? I can't. I don't know that you can because you as a board or another board after you would have to make those decisions. But that's how I see those facilities being repurposed and reutilized because we do have some other ancillary facilities that just are not good and we do have some issues in regard to the capacities of some of our schools and how they're being used. That will be beneficial. Even if you talk about the activities, if you want to offer middle school activities but you don't have a gym or you don't have a football field or you don't have a soccer field, a current high school has a majority of those facilities. You could expand those offerings, drama, speech, debate, what, you know, because there are some of those things that could be repurposed within an existing high school, that's how I would see those facilities being used. But it also has to be cost-efficient and effective for that to take place as well.
Any questions on use of existing facilities? Moving on, 3A6, Costs.
Before we do that, this may be a good place. Bridget, you want to pull up that slide with the number of schools? You had asked a question about the number of schools and so this was something that somebody else had asked this question, for whatever reason, I didn't get it on here, but I think it fits here as we segue over. This is a listing of all the schools larger than us and a few smaller than us. I was asked, we put this together. You can see the enrollment. You can then see the next column is the number of high schools that they have, number of middle schools, number of elementary schools, and the total number of schools. You also see that there is a couple of asterisks down at the bottom to be able to show you, we were really looking at kindergarten through 12th grade enrollment, just regular schools, regular classes. Because if you get into some of those, you can see there's a couple that are, there's three high schools with two academies. Well, you know, we didn't count Webster in our K-12. We didn't count, we didn't count preschool in this. We just looked at kindergarten through 12th grade and what we would consider high schools through elementary. So, that's what we tried to do. So, you can see as you go down that list, the numbers that are there, then, you know, our enrollment is a little below 11,000. It's actually a touch lower than that this year. When you go on there, you can find different numbers. DESI will sometimes have a different number than the school district website, but Bridget, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you pulled all these from DESI, didn't you?
That enrollment.
Yeah, all the enrollment numbers came from the DESI website and so then that's how we went through that process. So, we are trying to compare apples to apples as much as we can. That's why we just looked at K-12. Otherwise, this would be a little more skewed.
Did you print this out for us?
Can I print it off for you? We can. I'm sure. Can we print it off here?
We're attached it.
Okay.
Can you send us all the slides?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, you can see, again, a couple of schools, Melville and Ferguson-Florescent are the next two districts below us. Everybody else that's larger than us, this is what we were asked to provide, so hopefully this answers the question that you have.
Yeah, so, Dr. Van Zyl, something that sticks out to me is if you look at Park Hill, they have roughly 700 more students than we do. We have three high schools, they have two. We have four middle schools, they have four. We have 11 elementaries. Is that right? No, 14.
We have 14.
We have 14. They have 11. So, that means we have four less, we have four more facilities than Park Hill, but they have seven better students.
They're getting ready to build a brand new campus.
And then the other thing that sticks out to me is I see the dividing line is that there is not a school district on there that has an enrollment under 14,000 students that has three high schools or more. Everybody else that has an enrollment of less than 14,000 students has two high schools or less.
Can somebody define an academy as a view clip here? I know like what career tech, and I see the ninth grade center, but walk me through the academy.
That's where it becomes a little murky because they're going to call an academy something different. I'm going to look at Marley a little bit because I know that when she was in Liberty, they had an academy there. Was there a specific way that they outlined?
Similar to our high school alternative school.
It normally is specialized programming of some sort. It's not normally your core curriculum. It normally is a specialized training program of some sort to be an academy.
Is there a, is there a number that's needed to call it an academy? What kind of, how large are these academies that you would list up there?
Well, technically, you could probably call Hilliard an academy in a lot of ways if you wanted to, but most academies, as they sit, are where the kids go all day long. The reason that Hilliard isn't in that scenario is that our kids go back and forth between the two sides. I think it really depends on the district. How large was Liberty's academy, do you remember?
I can't speak to today because I haven't looked at enrollment numbers, but fewer than 200. I would say it was around, actually, around 100 students.
It's a lot of hands-on training that goes on in those facilities, a lot of, you know, your culinary arts, your auto mechanics, your health care. Lots, a lot of those programs are normally in those, in my experience.
As I look at it, as of tomorrow now, it looks like Liberty has three less facilities than we do, too. And they have an enrollment that's 2,500. Well, I guess not, 1,500 more.
This doesn't touch on buildings that aren't. Schools, cool.
Yeah, this is schools only.
Yeah, this is just K through 12 schools in enrollment. So, I didn't know where that, that may be a good transition because you were talking about that earlier on where that would fit before you jump into costs and we'll get this sent to you as well.
Any questions on that?
No, but I have a comment.
Sure.
A lot of our elementary schools were built quite a long time ago where everyone walked to the schools and they were smaller schools. So, in some of these towns that, you know, grew up later on, they built their schools to take more children in size. In our case, we would have to build, you know, take away a school and build, which is, you know, expensive. So, maybe we end up with more schools because it's less expensive for us at elementary level than closing and building. You know what I'm saying?
And I think that's part of the reason you asked about the redistricting side of things as well, to be able to say, do our boundaries match our capacities within our schools? Because if you remember your demographic study that was shared with you, there aren't, there was only two places in the town that were going to be growing as he projected over the next 10 years. That was the Ellison and Oak Grove, if I remember correctly, and those are on your east side of town. Everybody else was going to be declining. But I, to your point, some of these districts that you see, if there are growing communities where we're not necessarily a growing community, but I think that's also why you're asking But I think that's also why you're asked us to take a look at the redistricting as well. Because you don't want to change boundaries every two to three years. You want to be able to put some boundaries in place that balance you out as a school district to make you efficient and effective. Also take care of the needs of the kids in the communities as best you can because we are working with, as you know, a finite amount of money.
Right. Well, I'm just saying we may end up always having more schools because of when ours were built. That doesn't mean that we can't ever redo them, but we likely have, you know, a few more unless we're, we have some kind of crazy windfall where we could consolidate.
You can always make additions to buildings that we already have in order to.
If there's space.
There's a teeter totter effect as where does it balance out? Because the cost of running smaller schools costs you more as compared to the efficiencies normally of a little bit larger elementary school using elementaries from your vantage point. Because, you know, you have to duplicate, similar to your high schools, you're duplicating some services which cost you more. At some point, you have to put those costs on the scale and say, where does it tip to balance us out? And where does it tip to be able to say, we do need to maybe add on or make some adjustments in what we're doing?
Right, those numbers are important.
Moving on to costs, 3A6.
We've got Gabe, Dr. Edgar here, and we have Larry Hart as well. So I'm going to turn it over to them at this time to visit with you about costs.
Okay, Bridget, if you want to put the document up that we put together. All right, the first, the first document that we have here on the screen shows you enrollment for 1718, and then it projects it out to 2930. And as you can see, as Dr. Van Zyl alluded to, we do have a couple of schools that are going to grow, but most of them are at a pretty serious decline. And over that time, if you start at 1718 school year through 2930, we show a decline of 1,242 kids, which equates to about $8,635,626. So that's what you're going to be losing over time. You can see the numbers in the red down there. The 1,242 students is what you're set to lose with that, with that amount. Then if you go over to the right, it has the building costs that are provided. And those building costs, we have efficient, we have energy cost, we have trash, we have staffing, and then we also have operations and maintenance built into those numbers. And as you can see, if you just take a look at Benton, you have 6,780,000, whereas Central you have 12,641,000. You have a total operating cost of $83 million with the schools that you have right now. And that is actually at the bottom there. And what we are trying to put together as well is a projected cost for one new school, two new schools. And that's something that I'll have for you shortly. The problem I'm having is getting real numbers for schools that are new. We're trying to gather some information from Liberty North. I did get some operating costs per square foot from Joplin, which is about 91 cents on their new buildings. So if they're 91 cents right now, for instance, Central cost you about 91 cents, but that's without air conditioning. So if you put air conditioning in that building, it's going to double that probably. Benton currently costs you $1.36. If you put full, full air conditioning in Benton, you're looking at over $2, possibly $2.50. So 91 cents compared to 2.50. So we'll be gathering those numbers over the next couple of weeks. We just wanted to bring this stuff to your attention. So at this time, I would entertain any questions that you might have in regards to enrollment and operating costs of the buildings. Then I'll kind of turn it over to Larry for a minute to kind of explain some things.
So Dr. Edgar, you and I have talked about this because this is something I've thought about a lot because I think the costs are important, especially as we move forward, the operating costs. And I don't think something that's been explained to the public in this way is this. So our funding is roughly 50% local, 40% state, 10% federal, correct?
Yeah, roughly.
Okay, and so that 10%, we need to put aside because that federal money is earmarked for special programs. We can't touch that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Our state revenue, the 40%, the way the foundation, or the state funding formula works is that that is a attendance. So the more students you have, the more money you receive, right?
Yep.
It's really that simple, okay? So declining enrollment means we receive less money, correct?
Yes.
And according to this number, if we scroll down, Bridget, if you can, what you're showing us is if Mr. Smith's projections are right, that by the year 2030, we're going to lose $8.6 million of revenue.
Yes.
Okay? That's in addition to the levy that we just passed, right?
Yep.
Okay, so we're now up close to $15 million, okay?
Then there's an increase in cost.
Yeah, so thank you, Lou. That's where I'm going next. So we're putting aside the cost of rising utilities, inflation, insurance, everything else. Put that aside because we all know that's going to go up over the next 10 years. So when we say that the status quo, we are going backwards, this is what we mean. Because who makes up the difference? The local taxpayer does. They make up the difference. So just to keep the status quo, regardless of inflation, 10 years from now, our taxpayers have to pay $8.6 million more dollars, right?
Yes.
Okay? That's what we've seen and why people keep saying in this community, why do you keep coming back? Why do you keep asking us for more money? You're not managing your money. In part, it's because we have declining enrollment, correct?
Yes, and it's only going to get worse.
Exactly. And so that's why we're looking at this out in the future, okay? This isn't about what happened in 1970, 1980, 1990. This is about what's going to happen in 2030 and 2040. And we're looking at a funding cliff here. And we're trying to be proactive and not kick the can down the road. Because if we wait and are not proactive and we're reactive, it's going to be too late. And we're going to be in the situation that we were in in 2017, and this community has spoken loud and clear that they do not want more taxes. So when we hear this criticism from people throughout this process, that we are not listening to the community, I scratch my head because I'm sitting here saying, we are listening to the community. Because in November of 2017, this community spoke loud and clear that they wanted to pay less taxes. And so what we're trying to come up with is a plan that is proactive, that will keep taxes down, that is fiscally responsible, not just now but going into the future. And that will also not just address our high schools, but will address our schools at every single level, middle school and elementary moving forward. And Mr. Hart's going to tell us here in a minute about how we can put that plan together and how it's realistic and feasible to do. And I think that's something we have to keep in mind because I think we have not done a good job of laying that out to the community as a district and as a board and explaining to that about school finance. And at the end of the day, it really isn't that complicated. And that's really what we're trying to do. Larry, it looks like you have something to say.
A couple of things. I think part of the problem is that we, the board, and previous boards have not understood this issue until we've gathered all this information, got all these numbers together that Gabe has given us. We are just now ourselves understanding the real implications here. Just by looking at the numbers up there, it looks off the top of my head like it's costing us about $1,500 a student more to educate the students at Lafayette and Benton than it is at Central. So that, right there, that raises a red flag that we just need to address and which we are going to address.
Just a quick point, and you've heard me say this before, just having been here a little over a year, almost a year and a half. We're trying to, a little bit to what you were saying, try to set this district up in such a way that things are done proactively instead of reactively. As we've taken over in the last year or so, as you've asked us to take a look at efficiencies and effectiveness within the district, we talked to different departments, and I don't think there's a one that hasn't said, oh, we're not used to that. We're not, we're not used to looking five, 10 years down the road on how this would impact us or how this would benefit us. Well, if all you're doing is going around putting out fires or reacting to a situation, that very rarely is your most cost efficient and effective way to do things, nor does that help our staff and students when they don't know what's coming to them in the next week, month, five years down the road, how those things are going to look. So to me, that's a component that you have to take a look at this as well, similar to what you were saying. Not, not about just today or what happened five, 10 years ago. It's about five years from now, 10 years from now. How do you as a board help set the district up to be a little more proactive in this process?
Mr. Hart, you're on.
And I have distributed booklets ahead of time. Dr. Bruce Johnson, the vice president with our company, is also here with me. And we'll, we'll try to go through some of this, not necessarily all of the details. I'll try to give you the, what, the Cliff Notes version, I guess, is what, what you'd prefer. But let's start with, and I'm talking mostly capital facilities. I'm not, I don't have any revenues in what I'm giving you now that will take care of the enrollment declines and those things. But we're talking capital facilities. I participated in the focus groups that you had. I thought they were excellent. We had a lot of questions from the community members who attended. And what I've been asked to do for today was, was downsize the total project amount from 185 to 190 million to about 160 million so that we could approach it as one financing without having to have two ballot measures. You might recall, to get to the 185 million, your bonding limit is, is right at 140 million. So we, and with premiums, we couldn't get to the full amount. So we would have had to propose a lease financing, which would probably have taken another 20 cents of a tax rate. So that, that's in the background right now. I'm talking about 100, trying to get to 160 million. And if you would pull out from the booklet, this exhibit one, the legal size page, I'll review some of that with you, and then we'll get into particulars. I welcome your questions at any time. I've increased the size of the bond issue from 135 million to 138 million. That's just what, that's within about 2 million of your limitation, your bond, your legal bonding capacity. We're assuming on this spreadsheet that we would sell the bonds with re-offering premiums in order to, because 138 million is, is 22 million short of the 160. And you want to try to illustrate, how can we get 160 million without more than one ballot measure? So that's the, the goal of what I'm working with. So we would sell each of the issues. I have them spread out over three different years. You'll notice Schedule 7 is 10 million, Schedule 8 is 63 million, and that's in '21, early 20, 2021. And then 65 million is in early '22. Those are not set in stone by any means. What would determine it is assuming a successful election in April, how soon would we need to pay the architects for the work they're doing and drawing up the plans? And I'm, I'm thinking maybe we can keep that under 10 million for calendar year 2020. If not, then we would change it so that you wouldn't have a problem with it. And then we would have a 63 million and a 65 million to use up the rest of it. All of these would be interest rates of 5%. And we would be selling them at premiums to produce additional money for your project. And those re-offering premiums are in the fourth column for each issue there. They total $18,186,527. Are you, are you with me on that? Okay.
Mr. Hart, can I stop you?
Yes, sir.
Slow down a minute because I want to make sure everybody understands.
Of course.
On the premium bonds. And so can you explain as best you can in layman's terms, the difference between the GO bonds and the premium bonds and how that works?
Yes, they are, they're, they are GO bonds, so they're the same. But we're, we're selling them with the idea that the investors will pay you extra money if you give them a higher rate of interest for the first five years. And so 5% is above the market rate for five-year bonds right now, and they will pay a premium of these amounts. And, and these are conservative. So that's extra money that the bond sale will produce for you. You will still only repay the 138 million. The investors get a higher rate of return for the first five years. Then the bonds are callable, they can be refinanced. I have some, I have a, a page in the booklet that discusses the, a lot of details of premium bonds, why they're popular. Mostly, right now, the bids are coming in above estimates. And so once, once a school passes the issue, and then the architects take the project out for bid, and they find out they're, they're off in terms of how much money they're bonding for and what the project's going to cost. If they have high fund balances, sometimes that'll solve the problem, but a lot of them don't. So they ask us to, how can we get more money from our bonds? That means we delay the sale until we have a pretty good idea what the costs are going to be. And that, there are some advantages on that. We, we pay less interest because you don't borrow all of the money as soon as the bond issue passes. You wait until you've got the, the data from the bidding package. Maybe there'll have to be some adjustments to it. Then once that's in place, then we, we issue enough bonds to pay for all the construction that would be done within a reasonable time. And then, then another issue can come to market to finish it off. Is that, you follow that?
And so if the, if the, is the converse true then? So if the, if the project would come in underbid, would we have to sell the premium bonds or would we have the option at that time?
We, exactly, you're right. We would not have to sell them. Let's say right now, I think we'd have to sell the 10 million at premiums and the 63. But the 65 million, if the bids are, are below estimates and everything is, is in good shape, that premium could be less than what I'm projecting, or maybe it, maybe we would be able to sell the bonds at par on that one. Is that?
Is everybody tracking? Good, thank you.
So with that, then we subtract the cost of issuance. These are not to exceed figures, including underwriting fees, bond counsel, financial advisor fees, those, all of those things, state auditor fees. You end up with 154 million, 806,527 funds available for the projects, based on these projections. Then I've added in some reinvestment income. I figured, I think I figured 1.5% interest and a reasonable draw schedule. We can get better figures on that later. But that totals a million, 207,491, the third column from the right-hand side. So when you add that to the 154 million, we're just over 156 million. So I've got a gap of $4 million of, of getting you the 160 that you're seeking. So we, I think we're underestimating what the premiums would produce, but I hate to be too overconfident on what those will come in because the markets fluctuate from time to time. But that's, we're getting close to the 160 with only one, one financing, one voter-approved financing.
And so Mr. Hart, at the end of this, this says that the estimated amount would be $1.20 on the, on the levy. But because we have 50 million and no tax increase bonding, that would require a tax increase of a little over 69 cents. Is that right?
The existing levy is 50, a little over 50 cents. And to get to the $1.20, we would have to raise the levy 69 cents to cover the existing debt you have plus the, the, this new debt, the 138 million. And this would allow, I can get into it in a moment, this would allow a subsequent no-tax increase plan, probably within five years, for 40 million or more. It could be a phase two.
Within four to five years.
Four to five years, right.
With no tax increase?
That would be a no-tax increase above the $1.20. And you're, what Mr. Wright said, the dollar, the 50 cent, the 50 million is available right now with just the 50 cent levy that you have. So we could do a $50 million no-tax increase bond, but then we'd have to do a lease purchase to get the rest of the money, and that's two ballot measures. So right now, we're trying to go, how far can we travel with just the, the general obligation bond?
And so at the end of the day, Joe Taxpayer is going to ignore everything that we just said until now except for this last column. So can you explain the last column to us?
Okay. The, the, the estimated increase for a home with a fair market value of $100,000 for 69 cents would be $131.56 per year.
An increase of what would make that?
Yes.
So less than $11 a month for 100,000.
Less than $11 a month. And we have in, in your packet, there's a cost table that figures that for all, all different types of property values. It's a legal size sheet. It's, it's not labeled, well, it's labeled St. Joseph's School District, Buchanan County, Missouri, 69.24 cent debt service levy increase. That would be the cost for multiple. That would be the cost for multiple property examples for annual and monthly.
Is this appraised value or assessed value?
Assessed value. And it's a.
It's appraised here. It's assessed here.
Right.
There's two. There's two.
So this one, the first one, exhibit one's appraised. This one, the first column's appraised, the second column's assessed. So you can see both.
Yeah, for, for, for real estate, it's, it's assessed at 19%, 19% of appraised value or fair market value. And the other categories of property have different assessment levels as are, as are illustrated there.
So as Larry pointed out, and similar to what I said earlier, just people ask, well, so how do you get to phase two? How do you get to phase three? Again, that, that's why we're trying to set something up in such a way that proactively you know you've got at least 40-plus million dollars coming 40 years, five years down the road. So construction normally takes about two years, renovation or construction to get something done. So you can start the planning process to be ready to go so that you could carry out phase two, carry out phase three and address the other issues that are there. And that's a much more condensed timeline. And I don't know that it's something that's necessarily been done in this district, most districts that I've ever worked in, or I'm sure that Larry works with, that's what they do, to be able to continue completing their updates and renovations and not to let their facilities fall to some of the disrepair where we are.
And that, that's one of the things you will accomplish by getting your debt service levy to the dollar 20. It'll be comparable to many of these other larger schools that are continuously going to the market for new buildings because of their growth. This would be, oh, you wouldn't necessarily be growing, but you would be catching up. You'd have options for repurposing some of the buildings that are being replaced by the new buildings. So there, there's also going to be an opportunity to do lease financings, but I think it, it's probably going to be best served if we focus on having the GO bonds take, take care of the facilities and leave the leasing and, because you've got other operating needs with dropping enrollment and those things, it, to keep it as a separate matter that you bring to the public when, when we're ready to do that.
So Barry, you said that in 45 years, that we would have a no-tax rate increase of at least $40 million that would be available?
Yes.
But if phase two was more than 40 million, how close are we to that ceiling?
Well.
Are we there?
I, 40 million works easily with these projections. We can maybe find some extra there. I, I haven't focused a lot of effort on that. I just wanted to give you a figure, but I haven't done, I mean, there's more work to do. And it, can you, maybe, we don't really know, can you postpone some of the work that long for, for your package? The bids will tell us some of that, too.
And would it be true to say then that every approximate five years, we'd have another $40 million? Would that be a continuous process or how would that look moving forward?
It would, it would, there would be some continuous ability to issue future no-tax increase bonds. And we could, we could lay out a model that would be somewhat predictive of that for you. We would have to, we would estimate higher rates than, than are present, those type of things to be conservative. But you can lay out a model. There probably would be additional capacity in another three or four years of a like amount. But I, I haven't run those figures yet.
Do you have a gun out by the bar?
Not that far. So that's the, that's how we can get close to the 160 million. Yes, Dr. Green?
Question. You're, I missed, I missed something along the way. You were able to get us to 154.8. How did you get to the extra, how did you get to 160?
I estimate we would earn 1.2 million of interest on the bond proceeds while they're in your construction fund. Because they, they won't be spent all at once, they'll be gradually drawn down and they'll be reinvested as efficiently as, as Dr. Edgar can do that. And I'm, I'm hoping I'm off, I'm hoping I'm too conservative there, but I, I think a million two is a reasonable prediction based on where the market is now.
Do you think that's pretty firm?
I think it's possible right now. Now, if they, if the Fed lowers rates more, then that might, I may have to back off of that a little. But I, they're not, we're not expecting them to lower rates in 2020, based on the, the press that's out there right now. That's subject to the overall economy.
But that 1.2 million is over three year, over the three phases?
Over the three years, earnings from all three bonds total that.
So you're saying that's, see, schedule seven, June of 2020, that last column, the projected reinvestment is 87,760. So that's the interest that you're thinking that we're going to gain on money, on that 10 million?
Right, because it's only, it's only going to be invested for a half a year and there'll probably be fairly quick draws, paying for design fees and those things as you go, as you move through the calendar year there.
So then, schedule A, you're anticipating for any, any money that's left from that 10 million plus the 63 million or just the 63 million? Is that 550?
The 555 is just on the 63 million. And likewise, on the 65 million, it's 566,000.
So depending upon how quickly we have, we run through those funds, you actually, the potential for interest earned is a little greater?
Right. Right. And we're using about one and a half percent rate of return in our models. And we're assuming it's only available really for half of the year, that they'll spend it so that the average amount of money there is half of what the bonds start with. Once I get a draw schedule, once you have bids from contractors and they say, we're going to build it this quick. So we would set up the investments to, to coincide with those likely draws.
Right, we've got to be careful because whatever we're gaining in interest, we're losing because we're paying interest on that money as well, right?
Yes.
So we're paying more than what we're gaining. So it's a fine line about we don't want it to sit in there too long, right?
Well, right. That's, that's true, except that the interest we're paying is in fund three and the fund, the interest you're earning is for your project. So you're, you're, but it's, 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 it also helps us increase the $40 million issue in five years if we don't sell all these bonds at once. Because if we load, load up your debt service with all that interest and you're not earning much on it, the, that's going to take, decrease what we can do with a no-tax increase in four or five years. All that, all that factors in. And it's subject to reevaluation as the, as the market and the situation changes. Sometimes people say, well, what if, why don't we sell it all at once? That way, we don't have to worry if, if rates go, rates go higher. True. But, so there are those type of things that the board will discuss, that we'll lay out for you after the election where you decide, well, maybe we're going to sell more than you thought we did, that type of thing. You'll have those, those options.
And then along the way, the bonds that we already currently have, they're being paid down as well, so.
Yeah, so you're, you're paid, you've paid some of those off early. And that's saving interest. And that's, that's caused the ability for that 50 cents to do more. And, and then it's a lower increase to, to get the new issue.
I'll ask you another clarifying question.
Yes, sir.
We've all been struggling with the costs of construction with all this. We've all had a little bit of sticker shock as we've looked at this. That, that initial 10 million, what, what else is included in that initial cost?
I'm assuming most of that will go to your, maybe your soils testing, your, your property acquisition, your architect's fees, those type of things that you might have to fund at the front end of the project.
Site improvements?
And I've kept it.
That does include quite a bit of that.
I've kept it at 10 million so that you could have one piece of the financing that would be bank qualified. So that the public sale, the local banks and, and the banking community would be able to buy bonds. These other ones will be non-bank qualified, so there won't be much local appeal there. But it may turn out that you need more than 10 million in the first deal. So we'll have to adjust our thinking once we have more, more data to.
We're projecting between 4 and 10 million just for site.
Just to buy the land?
Mm-hmm.
Well, then it's probably going to be a bigger amount.
Have to remember that's estimated as well. You know, that's not sitting down with anybody negotiating or if there's a party, yeah.
I'm just saying, if you were saying 10 million for that first go-around, if we have to spend 10 million, others don't believe it's not.
No, we'll need more, definitely we'd need more to pay for the design work during that period of time. So I, likely, we'll have to increase that first amount. The, the spreadsheet that I would call your attention to in the booklet that lays all of this out is on page 11, spreadsheet nine. And it's, prior to that, on page 10 is the legal size one, which is, the numbers are very small. But that has, that has the assumption of implementing the 69 cent levy increase in fiscal year 2021, after April election, and keeping it at that point and having the assessed value grow at 1% a year. And you've actually grown at 1.9% the last five years. The last 23 years, your average annual growth has been 3.88%. That's all on page one, exhibit A. So we're using a conservative growth factor. You say, why don't you use one and a half percent or why don't you use 2%? We can change it to that. That will increase the projections on, in terms of how much more you could do in five years as a no-tax increase. And, and these cash flows that we have here, they would, the balances would be bigger than what I'm illustrating. If you go to the enlarged part on page number 11, spreadsheet nine, you go down to 23, 2023, 2024, in the purple column, you'll see those projected balances. And then your payments are, are lower than that and then are gradually increasing. That's the predictor, that's what says we can do a no-tax increase, another one in 24, 2024, 25. And this doesn't reflect the refinancings that are likely to be able to take place either, which would also improve the results. This is a worst-case presentation, assuming that we lock in the 5% and we're never able to refinance it to a lower rate, which is unlikely. But that's, that's what this is based on. We're wanting to make sure we don't put you in a situation that's going to require levy increases because we chose a premium to start off with.
To make the payments?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Hart, thank you. I appreciate what you've done. You've done exactly what we asked you to do, to come up with a way to fund this, to come up with more money and, and to do it in a fiscally responsible way. And I think you've outlined that for us, that, that is not only realistic now in an amount that is a little bit more than what the levy we just passed, but also provides a path forward so that we can realistically go into phase two and three down the road.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hart?
I guess I have one question. All of this is, what is the no-tax rate increase right now?
50.
So we have that 50 million, there's no way around not using that 50 million?
Well, because, because you can do 50 million without raising the levy, the levy needed for the 138 million is only 69 cents. We're, we're, we're getting, that 50 million is part of the 138. But because you're going over the 50 million, we have to, we have to have a higher levy. Does that, do you?
I understand.
If to do the $50 million one, then we would have to have leases that would be separate ballot measures. And for right now, we're just sticking with the GO bond approach for the whole thing. And thank you. I'll leave the rest of the booklets, just let you take care of the other items later on.
Thank you.
Sure.
Moving on to 3A7 Academics, Dr. Williams.
Academic Services was charged by the board at the last meeting to put together some potential programming for whatever configuration the future holds for St. Joseph's. As you know, I am very passionate about workforce development. What you're going to see is that we put together the goal of the programming for the future of the high schools as giving our students more than a transcript, but giving them a story. And frankly, for me, it's about what are the attributes, i.e. what are the skills and competencies that build into those attributes that we want our graduates to have in their profile? And based on that profile, what are the learner attributes that the students need to reach that? From there, you decide what the programming is to help the students become graduates who fit that profile. And then you decide what kind of building supports that programming. So my, my design was quite backward from the design that you've been using. My design is about how do we build those multiple engagement patterns to get our students to that profile that makes them learners who jump off the page, who really are competitive in that marketplace that is frankly global at this time. And our, our students are competing against kids from the buildings and districts that you saw earlier. How do we make them competitive, have a story, and really jump off the page? We've begun some of that work already in terms of our, our innovation configurations, some of our sports marketing work, some of our registered youth apprenticeship work, and some of those other authentic experiences. But what we have to decide is what does 21st century learning look like? And in being charged with answering this question in terms of potential for either renovation or new construction, where do you look to design new programming with that potential? One of those places is New Tech Network. You have that information. And, and I know that you have seen this presentation prior to. And in the interest of time to allow you to discuss all that you've heard tonight, I'm going to go through this fairly quickly, but please stop me at any point in time. So some of the things that I think are important, as you know, in a previous district, I was heavily involved in CAPS, which is that career and applied professional studies work. We have modified that in St. Joseph with registered youth apprenticeships. However, the CAPS replicator, I think, is something that we should consider in the future, whether that is a renovation or a new construction. As you see from the pin map on the right side, CAPS replicators are all over the country. It originated in Blue Valley. My work with Northland CAPS began in 2013. That is now up to eight districts in partnership. It initiated then with six. I believe we, at that time, were the second, perhaps the third replicator. And as you can see, that applied professional studies strand has really exploded nationwide. The difference, I would tell you in a nutshell, between the registered youth apprenticeship program that we have and a CAPS replicator is that CAPS is more about what I might call an executive internship as opposed to a registered apprenticeship. You are, are working with perhaps an engineer or an upper, upper level person in the company in a CAPS model. In a cap, in our registered youth apprenticeship, you are earning your hours toward the Department of Labor's employment certificate and certifications. Something else that I think we deserve to give consideration and perhaps even travel on a site visit to, I have heard that there are ways for us to get to Cherry Creek out in Denver, in the Denver area. But they have an innovation campus that is relatively new and was designed, frankly, to help kids explore different pathways, how to immerse and make authentic the core curriculum. So I think that is something that we need to consider in addition to this academy concept. They have similarities. But what you see on the right side, frankly, is a renovated high school. The top photo is a former gymnasium that was renovated into this competency-based academy structure. This is Huntley High School. And you'll see that they have Huntley High School academies in engineering and fine arts and medicine and in global studies. They also, at the same place, have a competency-based model. You're probably. You're probably familiar with the fact that New Hampshire is very competency based. They require that in statute for all high schools to have a competency based component. That was something that I was able to study many years ago, 14, 15, 2014, 2015. And many schools in Missouri are beginning to explore that model as well. How can students progress through high school by demonstrating competency rather than by being time bound? So it's that 21st century concept of using time and space differently. What does that look like? In Springfield, a little closer to home than say Huntley or Cherry Creek, they have academy models. And the academy models there are a bit similar to the Huntley concept in that they have tech and design, which would be incorporating some of your art and graphic design pieces as well as business. You have business and law, and then you have science, technology, engineering, and math. So how can you design programs of study that put students in small learning communities and help them progress through a four-year plan of study that is based on an interest inventory that puts them in a trajectory to be competitive in terms of scholarship and college admissions into those fields of study? And you'll see that each of those has different employment strands under it. So in technology and, and design, you're looking at architecture, you're looking at construction trades, you're looking at computer science. Say in the science, technology, engineering, and math, you're looking at medicine, engineering, and health sciences. So you have a variety of career pathways there. Finally, international baccalaureate, you are probably aware that when I was principal at Central High School, this was something that we became certified for, which was both the certificate and the diploma program. And I think it's a critically important and rigorous configuration of academics for students. And I think their learner profile speaks for itself in terms of the fact that students have to be both empathetic, involved, I should not say both because it's more than two. They have to be empathetic, involved, and they also have to be very inquisitive. So it is extremely rigorous and it has implications for college credit that goes probably a step beyond advanced placement or dual credit. Something else coming from something near and dear to my heart would be to expand Pro Start. I think we have a space in this community to expand our Pro Start, which is a culinary arts program that we currently offer actually in all three high schools on a small scale already. But I would love to see us blow it up and include hospitality management. And when you think about the opportunities for students at the university, at the hospital, in some of our event spaces for event management, event planning, hospitality planning, this is something that we don't have a lot of resources for in our community, but a lot of our students express interest in these fields. And outside of working as a teenager in a fast food restaurant, there aren't a ton of opportunities for kids to learn about nutrition and food service and, and that event perspective. Early college, we've talked about this at different points in time over the last four years. What does it look like if we could replicate the middle college model like Springfield has, or perhaps do that early college model that MCC is doing with many of our corresponding districts in the suburban area, which is a four plus two model whereby many students graduate either with a completed associate's or with most of their hours completed toward an associate's degree in addition to their high school diploma? And finally, I would like to expand existing programming. And don't think that once I sit down, you're never going to hear about this again, because all of these things are things that I have as goals for the future. I, I think that this consideration and this conversation about the facilities plays a big role in it. But I do think that all of these things need to be considered, no matter what we're talking about in terms of buildings in the future. So how do we expand registered youth apprenticeships? We already have conversations going on in the community with other business partners and with other, with the Chamber of Commerce about what other strands we can offer. How do we build up Aspire, which is our new alternative high school? How do we build up All Students Succeed, which is our partnership with Mosaic right now for students who have developmental disabilities? How do we make that, it's, it's, it's an apprenticeship program for all intents and purposes? And how do we get more students who have developmental disabilities into that kind of programming? How do we blow up sports marketing and actually build a studio in our high school so that students are getting the video production and the script writing experiences, those media publications on a more regular basis than having all three high schools travel to one site remotely? And then I think it's important for us to consider at some, some point in the future, the Launch Program, which is not to be confused with Springfield's virtual courses. Launch is the elementary project Lead the Way curriculum. And I think that for us to expand our capacity in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, it needs to begin at a young age. And how do you capture those students? By doing the Launch Program. In my previous district, we began this by piloting two of the Launch modules. In year one, in year two, we piloted the second two Launch modules until we were fully implemented with Launch. And what kids are doing with that PLTW configuration in elementary school is they are designing, coding, building robots, and they are using all of the science and mathematics that is necessary and goes into that kind of instruction and learning. So those are the kinds of things that we have to consider. Not only what the high school looks like, but how do we backbuild? If we do international baccalaureate again at the high school level, the diploma program, why wouldn't we consider also a middle years program? Why also wouldn't we consider an early years program? Those are the kinds of things that put students, put children on a trajectory from kindergarten to high school of being ready for that rigorous learning. And they have a different level of interest, engagement, and involvement in their education than they do if they sit and are delivered content in a traditional way. Today's learners frankly, my children included, expect something a little bit different than what I expected as a student sitting in a classroom. So I think we have to be mindful of, of what that looks like. I would be happy to entertain any questions you have at this time. I know I went through that quickly. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Any questions?
All right. Moving, sorry, yeah, Dr. Green, sorry. Didn't mean to move on too quick. You're trying to digest all that information.
I was. That's a lot to digest. It's also, I love the possibilities. I love what you lay out. There you are again. You're gone. Where'd you go? And, and, and you know, we're wrestling, we're, it, that's, you're huge concepts that expands lots of discussions and context. When we, when we tried to figure out how does that overlay with what we're figuring out with facilities? One of, one, I was curious, you pointed out the Springfield School District and academies there. Are those present in, in all of their high schools? No.
That's Glendale.
Just Glendale only? Okay. Okay. It, how did, how did they decide? How did that work?
I would have to ask some questions. And I think any of those things we could explore in greater depth if that is the direction that we wish to head. But I would say that vision isn't, isn't something that one person possesses, it has to be shared. So as we explore what those programming possibilities could look like, then it would take a team of people going on site visits to learn more about it, to really decide how does it look in that context? And then how if we decided to do something like that in St. Joseph, do we apply it to this context? Because it would be, it would be silly for us to think that we can take one program from somewhere else and, and put it down exactly as it was in that place in St. Joseph, because every program needs to be adjusted for the context of the students, the staff in the community that we're in.
The other, the other component, as Marley and I talked as well, we also kind of need to know the direction, because if you're talking about three high schools, two high schools, or one high school, that has a direct impact on what and how you're able to offer it. Because I, I think we all agree, at least from the academic side of things, is that all of our students deserve the opportunities, whether, whatever model is selected. But there is a definite cost to offering those things at three schools, two schools, or one school and, and how those can be set up. And so that's why, as you know, you were asking about how can you provide things academically? Until we basically know what that concept or idea is going to be, it's a lot harder to bring that conversation to life, because otherwise you're talking very globally. She gave you a lot of great information, but it's, it's at the 50,000 foot view instead of the practical, here's what it would look like in St. Joe view. I'm not trying to put words in her mouth.
Pro Start, Pro Start, for example, you have to build out in, in that, to blow it up into a hospitality management, you have to consider the cost for the industrial kitchen for training. We already send our teachers to training, so that would not be an additional cost. Then you would look at all of the supplies that you're buying. So if you have an industrial kitchen and you are looking at events, what events are you planning and what food are you buying and what part of the fat cost there? How do you look that into a schedule? And most districts that have robust Pro Start is a two hour block in a traditional seven period schedule and takes two of those blocks. So how does that look? There are lots of additional conversations to have around these two things.
And when you talk about hospitality too, I know a lot of times it's around events or food and that, but you know, or hotel motel, which is a huge business all across the United States and the world, it's a global business. That's another feeder for that program that we could take advantage of, that are, you know, can be applied right here in St. Joseph.
Marley, are the academies that we looked at here, are they similar to, like in North Kansas City, I think I have friends whose kids, I think it's North Kansas City is their district, where the children get to choose if they would like to go to that school where they focus on the different kinds of?
It's Park Hill.
Is it in Park Hill?
Park Hill.
Well, I thought they lived, well, I guess they are. I guess they are. And I have two friends down there and I have the two of them mixed up about where they were. So they get to choose if they want to go to that school and the kids have to decide or remember them discussing, do they want to be at the school where all their friends go, or do they want to go to the academy situation where there's cool stuff that they're interested in learning? Were these ones similar to them?
So there were two different ones. So Cherry Creek is a different site. They attend their school, as I understood it from what I read, they attend their school for part of the day and then they go to the innovation campus for part of the day. In Glendale, they are at their high school the whole time. Those are small learning communities within their high school.
So basically it's like, it's like St. Joe and Hilliards, if that's what I'm understanding.
State of the Union.
It's just like when we have the St. Joe and Hilliards.
Not, not exactly, no. The academies in Springfield, they're actually in their high school all day and they're, they're doing those course pathways within their high school. They don't leave their campus. And Cherry Creek, it is a bit different because they also have a career center.
But that leads into what we were talking about with hopefully doing in Hilliards if it isn't a phase one thing and phase two with extending Hilliards and possibly that being a four-year school or, you know, a part of this school, but somewhere where kids can go in as freshmen, have the standards core, or core curriculum embedded and build on trade and technical.
There's a lot of possibilities. None of that closes the door. And I think that's kind of what Marley's trying to say is, and what we're trying to convey is, until we kind of know the direction that you as a board want to go conceptually with facilities, there is, there normally, we're kind of doing a little bit of this backward because there are some conversations, like Marley said, academically that drive what some of those things are going to look like. But we are where we are in this process and so that's why she's shared with you what she did, is there's a lot of possibilities. And we also know that our community is different than others and what some of our businesses need and what they want today and five and 10 years down the road, we need to try to help fill some of those positions and help our kids know that those are possibilities within their hometown. So it may look differently exactly how you could set some of those things up.
So thank you. As we move into the discussion, so I'll kick things off. And I think one of the first things we've got to talk about is, in my mind, based upon the data we've received and the feedback, we have to look at what the model is. And in my opinion, the current model's broken, period. That's not even debatable in my mind. By any metric you measure us, we are failing. And this is not an attack on our administration, it's not an attack on the teachers that are doing the best they can with what they have. Okay? I want to be clear. But we have declining test scores, we have declining enrollment, our programs are declining. We have people that are leaving our community. There was the article in the paper yesterday. We have trouble attracting and retaining staff. Can I go on? By any metric, we are now a below average school district. And so what do we do? Right? That's the question as we move forward. And Mr. Hart gave us this that was inside of, of the packet that he gave us, and it looks at the total school levies. And you are never going to hear me say throwing money at the problem is the answer. Never. Okay? But we have to look at what our competitors have. So our total levy is $4.24. Liberty, $6.45. North Kansas City, $6.20. Blue Springs, $5.55. Park Hill, $5.40. Think I'm cherry picking the, the top? Lathrop, $5.34. East Buchanan, $5.26. Smithville, $5.17. Maryville, $5.06. So as I said earlier, this community has said, do more with less. All right? Fine. But that means you've got to accept less facilities. That's the reality of the situation. We can't have a both ways. So in my mind, as we, as you get criticism about we're not listening to the community, again, I scratch my head because we are. We're doing what they ask us to do coming out of December of 2017. All right? I understand that since picture does not look good moving into the future, but that's the reality we are dealing with here. And so, you know, I'm all for history and tradition. We understand, I think, everybody up here, how important it is to our community of our three high schools and what the fabric of that means for this community. But this is not the same community it was in 1970, 80s, or 90s. It is not the same school district. And so that romanticized idea does not exist. I'm sorry, folks, it doesn't anymore. And to deny that is denying reality. And I understand that is uncomfortable, that is not what people want to see when they look in the mirror, but that is the reality of where we are right now. And we take this job very, this is a huge responsibility, talking about changing and closing high schools. None of us come into it lightly. But it is something we have to look at or something very dire is going to happen down the road. And this, I commend this board because this board is committed to doing those tough things. We've done that over the last couple of years. We've done things where other boards have chosen to kick the can down the road and we aren't doing that anymore. All right? That doesn't mean we're going to be successful, it doesn't mean everybody's going to agree with us, but we've got to begin that conversation. Right? So what are we trying to do? So Tammy, bear with me, short example, I know the time, but bear with me. So here we go. You want to go take a trip to California and I'm going to give you the choice of a 1930 Model T, okay? Or a brand new Ford Explorer. Okay? You tell me, I tell you, Tammy, that Ford, that Ford Model T built in 1930 has been impeccably maintained. It will get you there, just like the other one will. And you say, yeah, Seth, but the problem is, where do I plug my phone in? There's no navigation system, there's no heating and cooling. It's going to take me twice as long. What happens if I break down? Are there parts to fix it? What am I going to do? Tammy, it's still going to get you there. It may take you twice as long, it may cost you twice as much, but it's still going to get you there. Or do you take the brand new Ford Explorer? Okay? That's where we're at right now, folks. And I understand that may not be a perfect example, but in my mind, I, I'm having trouble on some of these things. So here's, in my mind, we've got two things. One, what's best educationally? Because that's why we're all here, right? What are we going to do? It's best educationally. And then two, what's the cost? Because at the end of the day, the cost is the big factor. And so in my mind, the only way we can guarantee our kids an equal and a better education is to change the high school model. It's the only way. Right now, it's not equal. It couldn't be more clear. Okay? And so I understand about this, the concerns about size and opportunities and all of that. And again, it's not about closing schools, it's about repurposing them for other, for other options. And so at the end of the day, you know, is the community ready for the conversation? I don't know. But we've got to put forward a plan that addresses the concerns, but also shows the need for why we're doing this, right? And, you know, I'm okay with criticizing, you know, complaining, questioning. That's the right of the public and they should. And, and at the end of the day, the community's going to get the say on what they do. But at the end, can we please stop the hate and vitriol? Because at the end of the day, we're all here to try to provide a better education for our kids. And the stuff that, this is not Washington DC, okay? The stuff that goes on social media is ridiculous and it doesn't help the conversation. If you have legitimate questions or concerns, bring them to us, let's address them and let's discuss it. Okay? But again, this isn't DC, this is not impeachment, this is not Trump versus Pelosi, this is not Democrats versus Republicans. This is about our community, okay? And what we're trying to do. So with that, I'm going to turn it over at the So with that, I'm going to turn it over at the end. The last thing I guess I'll say is, in my mind, it's this simple. Are we backward-thinking or forward-looking? That's the question this community has to answer. What do they want to do moving forward? Backward-thinking or forward-looking? It's that simple. Do we continue on the path we're going, which is a decline, or can we turn it around? So with that, I will open it up for discussion.
Couple of things, I guess, from my vantage point. If there's things that you as a board still need from us, that's kind of where we are. Are there additional questions that you need answers to or other comments that anybody needs? That was kind of what this meeting was, but there was a lot of information given to you today as well, so I don't know if it generates other questions for you.
I think the, oh, go ahead, Tammy.
I was just going to say, I think until we decide what the true model's going to be, we're just going to keep having you guys running around in circles. I think it's very unfair until we make that decision as a board, whether we're going to go with three or two or one, to ask, to continue to ask you. Because today, wow, I mean, going to commend the information and, and all. And I would hope that the, yes, would be made as attachments, the forms and stuff, the numbers and that.
I'm sure Donna can take care of that.
If we can put those on tomorrow, onto this agenda as attachments, so we have those hard numbers.
And for the public as well?
Yes, for the public as well.
So if there, there aren't any other questions, I guess, kind of to the next point that you're at is, for you as a board, to kind of give us some direction on, on what you want to do is, to me, I guess there's several options. Number one, you could choose to do nothing. You could choose, you can't do anything at this next meeting, because that's not an agenda item. You could choose to wait until the January board meeting. You could choose to have a special meeting in January prior to your next board meeting. And so those are kind of the three things that I see as what you have, as options in front of you. And I guess need, I just need some guidance and direction from you as a board on what you would like to do next.
So I think today, it was kind of like drinking from a fire hose, all of the information that we were presented. And so I think we need some time, at least me personally, to go through, consider this information. We may have questions as we go back through it and review it over the next coming weeks. And so my suggestion would be that we look to try to set a date for a special board meeting. That would be sometime in mid-January before the deadline to put something on the ballot. Not saying we're going to do that, but if that is something we desire to do at that meeting, then we can do that. It gives us the option. If we decide not to, then, then we won't.
I don't object to that.
Yep, Larry.
I might add, everything you said, if you remember, in the community survey that had been done in St. Joe, 2010, 2014, 2018, it's very clear, very clear in this survey that public education is one of the things that has gone downhill in the last nine years. And it's one of the most important things. The only thing that outranks public education is public safety. Those are two top issues of why, of why the problems we had in St. Joe. So there's a lot of backing here by the public on, they realize that we're having a problem here with education and that we need to do something about it. And it needs to be done right now.
I would just, I would just say, I think it's very important. I think we are at a critical juncture here. I think the declining enrollment is a huge issue, and I think it's an issue we have to hit head-on. I think, I think we do want to be looking to the future, and I appreciated that. I appreciated what Dr. Van Zyle said, that we are trying to be proactive and look at the next five, 10, 20 years and not getting ourselves in a bind that we have been in the past, recent past. I also think it's very important for this community to embrace its tradition. We've talked quite a bit about what do, what do we do with our existing buildings, whether they are renovated as high schools, whether, that some of them are renovated as high schools, whether they are renovated as middle schools. I think it's important to communicate to the community that, that we do embrace what our identity has been, what our tradition has been, what our heritage has been, in some fashion. That we don't just throw that away, because we need to be forward-thinking, but we also do need to embrace our tradition. So I think that's part of the conversation. I think that's part of the solution. I agree with everything you said, Seth. I think we need to be forward-thinking here.
Any other comments?
So do we want to set a date?
We got to...
So I guess I need to know from you. I would recommend, personally, if, if you're going to look at something, the sooner is probably better, in the first part of January. You know, so we come back, the week of the sixth is the first full week that we're back. The 20th, we have off. So to me, either taking a look at the week of the sixth is your first, your first opportunity to do something that week.
How about the week of the 13th? Because if we, if we have questions, and we don't send them to you till the end of this week, and then everybody's off, that doesn't give you any time, because you won't be able to gather information till the week of the sixth, right?
Yeah, well, you know, technically, I'm not off, but, you know, yeah, we can, we can look into either one. I've got, I'm pretty sure we have to have, if for some reason you decided to do something for a ballot in April, I think you have to have your decision done before the 23rd. So I think you could do something the week of the 13th as well. You know, I just throw that. To me, the sooner the better. You don't want to, otherwise, unless you're waiting until the January board meeting, which is the 27th.
And then that's also two weeks before the board meeting. We have until the 28th?
January 28th.
When do you think you might have something on the redistricting from Preston?
The demographics, yeah.
Well, we have, we have the demographics, but I, I think that he may have something first or second week of January. He didn't give me an exact date. He just said it depends on how much information we're able to get him yet this week.
What would help me, anyway, is if we had some idea of what it would look like, let's assume that we, that all three current high school buildings are emptied out, because all high school students are going to be in new facilities someplace, somewhere, somehow. Then how would the district look going down? How would, how would you best use those buildings? You came up with a very good, I thought, explanation earlier on how Ben might be reused, Lafayette Central, the same thing. How might the district look if, if we did redistricting and had all the high school students move out of the existing buildings?
And I'd have to double-check with him, because remember, he's looking at K-12, and he can probably do different scenarios for you. I haven't gotten into a big, in-depth conversation with him. But, you know, that can be something we ask him. But also, it's going to depend on location, you know, as well. And the other issue that we have, similar to what we talked about earlier with the boundaries, is we already have some facilities that are over capacity. So how can you try to address some of that, plus the socioeconomic side of things? So I, I hate to put, paint him into a corner, but I, he told me sometime in the first part of January, I can try to find out more specifically.
Maybe if we give him more specific information and say we need this by X date, that could be useful.
If we, if we use the 13th as an example, give them the goal to shoot for, maybe we can at least get the middle school, high school stuff, you know, help us in our conversation.
Based upon our conversation we had with him, I thought, once he got the data in, the most lead time was getting all the data in, and then the scenarios were quick after that, and it was the data gathering that took the longest.
But the one thing that I want you to really refresh his memory on is how many preschool classes are at Oak Grove. Because we have, what, seven or eight class, preschool classes in that building? He did not include that when he gave us that information before. So it sort of swayed that information just a little bit.
Yeah, he's going to have to project out.
Yeah. But I can't do the 13th.
Yeah, you, you guys, tell me.
Does it have to be on a day?
No. How about, so you're off because the 20th? How about the 21st? We can go the next week.
21st puts awfully close to the 23rd, but...
No, it's the 28th. That's why I...
So if we have something, if we have a meeting the week of the 20th, then we could make a decision on the 28th or the 27th at our regular board meeting.
Could, I don't know. There's, again, looking at Gabe a little bit, we have to have the language and everything. If you make a decision, it has to be ready to go and to them. So they would, Larry Hart and Gabe would have to work on what that language would be. So I personally would say a little more lead time than just the day to do that.
The 14th is really the only opportunity that week that I have.
How about the 20th, the week of the 20th? How about the 21st or 22nd?
Now, you, I was, somebody was saying if you made the decision on the 27th, then turn around and have it ready on the 28th to give to somebody. If you do it the week of the 20th, we can't...
What I was saying is that if we had a meeting and we decided that we were going to do something, then we could actually take action the following week at our regular...
And they could work on the language and have it ready to go. Yes.
21st looks good. I would prefer that over the 22nd.
21st.
21st does sound good.
21st, going once. Speak now, forever hold your peace. Sold. 21st. Five or 30?
Five 30.
Special board meeting.
In the boardroom or here?
I think we should plan on having it here.
Probably here.
So it's another work session, no, special board?
No, a special board meeting.
And I would say similar to what somebody, if you, as you're looking at the data, if there are other questions that you have come up, the sooner you get those to us, the easier it is for us to work with people, because they're going to be taking their holidays and things as well.
And you'll find out about Preston, about his time.
Yeah.
How does the public get questions out to you guys?